The office comes upstairs, the police department and the city workers, Father. May we all work together in unity for the best of the community. And I thank you for all that's been done here and all that you're going to do. And I'm thankful, I live in Perry, and I've got such good leadership here. And I thank the Lord for all that. And bless this meeting tonight in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We have one more councilman. As far as I know, Bob will be here, but quite often he can't get here till right at 7:00. So we'll wait till 7:00 to start, allowing him that time. I will call our Perry City Council meeting to order. Let's have the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Devin, would you do the roll call, please?
Randy Coffey.
Here.
Mindy Galavine.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mike Connel. Mayor Sue Hammond.
Here.
All's accounted for except council member Mike Connel.
He did let me know yesterday in a phone call, well, actually, two days ago, that he would not be able to be here tonight. Looking now for approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve and adopt the agenda as printed.
Second.
There he has moved, and Bob seconded that the agenda be adopted as printed. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay, motion passes. And reading now an approval of the minutes of the July 15th meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the July 15th, 2021, regular meeting.
A second.
Steve has moved and Larry seconded in regard to the July 15th minutes. Those in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed with nay, motion passes. And now we have pre-approved reports, and we have Jamie here from the district library.
Yes. For the new people, I usually travel to the townships and cities.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Where we have library branches, and I just give the update of what we've been doing the past year, and then the important statistics. If anybody wants one, I can give you one. I won't go over all the numbers, but they're important to me, and I'll highlight the important ones to you. And I know you've got a lot of business to do tonight, so I'll try to keep it summarized. As you can imagine, the last year's been quite challenging for the library. We were closed, I believe I attended the city council meeting last year about this time. We had reopened, we were closed from March till June. We were able to reopen June 8th. We reopened as soon as we could with all the safety protocols in place, and it was quite a slow summer, as you can imagine. You know, our summer reading program is usually, a lot of kids signed up. We had low numbers last year, about 300 and something, which is the lowest we've ever had since I've been on board with the library. But thankfully, this year, our summer reading program has bounced back significantly. We had over 700 kids sign up. In part, that was due to, we purchased over 1,000 badge books, which I'm going to just pass out so that you can pass around and look at them. But we received a grant from the Mid Eastern Michigan Library Cooperative to buy those. So I think, and I went around to all of the schools where we have branches and showed the reading specialists and really promoted it as much as possible. So that really got interest up in using the library this summer. Plus, people really wanted to, they wanted to bring their kids in this summer, which is great. So we had, like I said, 741 kids sign up and high participation, not just sign up, but actually participate. As you can imagine, most of our programming was done virtually because we could not have in-person programming, and our library system is really big on programming, just district-wide in-person. So we had to kind of pivot to virtual. So we had an author presentation, we had a birding presentation, we had a person do a program on soldier stories from World War II. So we really tried to do as much of that as possible. Of course, we missed the in-person programming, so we're starting to get back to that and just started that about a month ago, outdoor programming. So we'll see how that goes. But we've had quite an audience for the three or four programs that we've had so far. We were able to have one through the 4H extension, or MSU extension through 4H. And the McQueen House, they let us use their lawn for that. We had probably 40 people there, which was fantastic. So we really appreciate that. District-wide, we, a big move that we had, we moved our new low-thrift branch. It used to be inside of the elementary school, and we were able to move it to a downtown building location. Hazleton Township approved that, and since then, that library has, the use of it has gone up, and people really liked the new location. Another big thing that we did, we revamped our library website. If anybody has time, check it out. We hired a specific vendor who does library stuff specifically, so we can do online registrations for our programs. It was quite a new project, a lot of work, but it was well worth it. It looks fantastic. And another big thing we did, we have a new app, so people can, you know, the younger generation, I suppose, they use the apps. They don't necessarily go on websites so much, so it's, with a touch of your finger, you can have access to your account, you can place books on hold, all of that stuff. So it's super user-friendly, and we've had nothing but positive comments on it. Another big thing is, we received a grant to purchase these Wonder Books, which are super cool because they read to you. And not only are they picture books, but you can get chapter books for, like, for example, Diary of a Wimpy Kid. So not all kids can read very well, so this type of book reads to them in a really, a near-reader voice, because, you know, not every kid gets to be sat on somebody's lap and, like, read to. So these have been extremely popular, and we were able to purchase pretty much every published book that we could in Wonder Books format, and probably about 120 of them. So I hope to, as they publish more, to be able to add that to our collection. So, oh, another big thing, just finished our strategic plan, our five-year strategic plan. So we have lots of goals to hit in the next five years. That was something that we probably should have done a year or two ago, and it's a good thing that we were able to meet despite all of, you know, the conditions of not being able to meet. We were able to come up with a committee and hammer out the strategic plan. So we've got lots of things to work on in the next five years. But right here is all of the pertinent statistics, things that I like to look for, you know, obviously circulation. That has gone down, not as significantly as I thought it would, but district-wide, you know, we circulated almost 75,000 books or movies. We circulate more than just books, but, and that includes our digital content. We still have about 4,500 people use our computers. And library visits, about 40,000 people, district-wide, this isn't just for Perry, but district-wide, walked through our doors, which is not too bad considering the year that we went through. And of course, I always keep the statistics on the different collection numbers to make sure that we're keeping up with, you know, the different genres, adult fiction, nonfiction, all that stuff, and that you can all see the numbers, too. As far as Perry, Carol Pavlica is still the branch manager. She wasn't able to make it because she's working on the 4H burn for the fair. So she's working on fair stuff right now, getting that prepared. But we, Tony Moore, some of you might know Tony, known as Mr. Tony, he retired last December. Everybody misses him, but he still visits our library in Crema and in Perry. But we did hire a new library assistant, and her name is Christine. She's a retired teacher, so she's, you know, worked with teens and kids for many years, and she's so far been a really great asset to the library. And she's hoping to start up more teen-type programs and get, actually partnerships with the local schools and get some teens into the library more. So I think that's, that's it. Just chugging along as best as we can. I'm hoping that we can stay open and do some more in-person programming because that, people really seem to need it right now. So.
Counsel, does anyone have a question for Jamie or anything you'd like her to address? No? Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can purchase these this year again because these are such a hit.
We have Commissioner Plom in here today. John, would you like to do your presentation?
Yes, I have a few things to discuss this evening. In our last set of commissioner meetings, we passed a motion to give hazard pay to the employees and the Board of Commissioners and other elected officials. That was a mistaken motion. First of all, you cannot accept hazard or bonus pay as an elected official during your term of office. You can't do it. There was a discussion that because it was COVID money, that that could be a possibility, and so it was in the motion and passed, and that we would look into. Well, that did not happen. The money was paid out the next day. It should have been 10 days hence during a normal pay period. When several of us commissioners realized what had happened, it was Monday evening or Tuesday, there was an awful lot of discussion that our board chair should probably call a special meeting and rescind that motion for that pay for elected officials and then pay the employees the hazard pay. And the hazard pay was based on guidelines from state and federal guidelines. It can get quite involved, and if you want to talk about it, I certainly can. My position, we, the gentleman, Broder, did not vote on Thursday because he had a funeral that he had to attend that would take place on Saturday, and he was gone. I had to leave and go to a funeral in Atlanta, Georgia. My wife's youngest sister passed away from lung cancer in a memorial service. The special meeting was not called. So as I get back, the Monday, a week, the Monday after, the Monday after the meetings, I contacted, and four of us commissioners called for a special meeting. The topic was reorganization of the county board. Three commissioners can call a meeting, but you need four commissioners voting either yes or no to make a quorum and make the motion stay. You get five commissioners, six, you get seven. Only four, and they were Webster, Broder, myself, and Marx from Duran. The quickest we could get together and get everybody together, several on vacation, was last Sunday at 5:00. At that meeting, made the motion, we accepted the resignation of our chairman of the board chair. We also elected a new chairman, Greg Broder from Wassle. And that was the organizational meeting. Also, I'd like to point out that all elected officials returned their money immediately, many of them knowing that you cannot increase your base pay. There was that terminology, "Well, it's COVID money and it's from the federal government." Well, I hate to say this, but taxes go to the federal government from our local taxpayers. Plus, our Constitution says you can't. There are other states that don't have that provision, and a lot of other states did pay elected officials as well as employees of state government. I had been kind of beside myself because it should have never been done that way, and I'm really ticked off about it. So we had a reorganization. I'd like to point out that that meeting last Sunday, there was just four of us. So the vote was for, it had to be for, else it would not have been a vote that could sustain itself. So our next set of meetings are coming next week, starting in Monday. Tuesday is not going to have meetings, maybe not Wednesday, we don't have a lot to do, and then Thursday we'll meet at 5:00. That's our revocation meeting, that's the Board of Commissioners. If anyone has any questions, please ask them. There's a lot more to this story, but that's, I kind of wanted to give you the synopsis. Sometimes when bodies make mistakes, you better hop on it, and you better correct them in a very timely manner. This did not happen this time. Several of it, a couple of commissioners had to get back to make sure that we could call a meeting, it's a petition, to give to the clerk, and then we had to vote, and hopefully, four votes would sustain the reorganization. So, any questions on that? And I got a couple of things, I won't keep you long.
Yeah, I do have a question, John. And that would be, all I know about it is what I've read in the paper.
Yeah.
I appreciate your coming forward and sharing, you know, your perspective on it, and I would, would ask, is there a plan to make certain that the general public is made aware of the real, complete story, if you will?
Yes.
There's a perception out there, obviously, that you're fully aware of, that it wasn't an ideal situation.
Yes, and I will also discuss, I'll probably write that. There was also the perception that the chairman should have, was not, the chairman, the previous chairman of the board was not a supervisor. He's not a supervisor of the commissioners. So therefore, the bonus pay that he wrote in for himself was inappropriate. If there was bonus pay and it was allowed, you have to pay all commissioners the same because we each have the same vote, and so forth and so on. But that wasn't going to be an issue because we can't take it, yes. I will be composing that, and I also will be composing an article that how the, how hazard pay was paid to all county employees. There are several different groups, several different groups did different things. Some people stayed home and took the, worked from home, and they took the unemployment. There's a, there's a lot of discussions on that, and I will be writing an article on that, too. Yes, we will. And if the Board of Commissioners, through our previous chairman, had certainly called a special meeting that following Monday after the board action on Thursday, things could have been much different, but that did not happen. So other commissioners, we had to get together, it was a little late, later than, of course, we certainly would have liked it, but that's what we had to do. Yeah, anything else?
Is there a meeting, minutes from your meeting when you voted on?
Yes.
Will you guys release those, or are they public?
Oh, yeah. Those are, absolutely. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, they're available now. If you'd like me to get you some, I will. I can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The website approved, too.
I tried to go to their website and figure out when they met, and I couldn't figure it out. They told me where, but that was it. But I, John called me at whatever day that was, at like 9:00, so.
And I had talked to Sue. You know, it's hard to fix things after things have gone wrong. And I've always said this about commissioner work, it's not what I know, it's what I didn't know. So we'll leave it at that. Couple of things. COVID money. Sue and I have talked. COVID money, at the present time, has very limited uses. For our discussion purposes tonight, you can use it for drain work, you know, county drains through farm fields, cities. Sanitary drains, I know that we discharge water into sanitary drains to circitize the earth, approved by Eagle, I almost said the DNR, Eagle. And they can, money's going to be used for that. You can use money for sanitary sewers, like city sewers, water towers. All, those areas, those areas may get expanded, but what we're discussing at the board level, and as a matter of fact, I have a meeting in the morning at 9:00 to discuss with the drain commissioner, is how we might use some of this COVID money which we've received. This year, we received, I think, 6.7 million, next year, we'll receive 6.7 million again. How that might enhance future development. These monies have to be used for future activities. It's all here in fine print, if you'd like to read it. So it's, we're going to discuss those things, how it might benefit all the people that live in Chilwell County, so on and so forth, villages, cities, townships. And we hope to have pretty soon a discussion where we'll invite township officials, people could come, I mean, city and village officials, to discuss what they want. Now, Sue has written a letter to the Board of Commissioners, we've received several now, you know, that water and sewer are pretty important to the city of Perry and for development. I think that is, too. I'm trying not to cough a little bit. That smoke coming in from the west, I get inside, I'm a lot better, I get outside, and it really bothered me. I know it's been bothering Sue. So anyway, that will be coming, and hopefully, we'll have our programs make some decisions. We have to have this money planned and spoken for by '24, but that might be by 2026. It's pretty hard sometimes to get things planned out a year, year and a half. Also, another thing that we've started was on Monday at 9:00 in the morning, we had an apportionment meeting. I went to that. The apportionment committee is made up of your clerk, your prosecutor, your treasurer, and chairmen of each of the political parties. They had an organizational meeting, the clerk calls the meeting, then they elected her also as the chair, and one of those five could serve as chair. Just a side point, those are for commissioner districts. Our population of Chilwell County is pretty close to what it was in 2010. 2010, it was approximately 71.5. Now they're saying it's going to be 69.5, and some of the preliminary counts, the counts are to be in two, I'm trying to think of the date, it's in September, I think, September 10th. And there's another meeting of the apportionment committee in September 13th. We don't really see the number of commissioners changing. You can have from five to 21 commissioners in a county our size. We have had five, we've had nine, and now it's been seven for quite some time. We don't, I don't expect it to change more than seven. There are more people in the southern tiers of our county, all the township, cities, villages in the southern part now than there used to be, and there's less people in our northern townships of our county. And it's, but it may not make a lot of difference in districts, but it may make a little, some changes. I could go on, but you've got a lot to do tonight. Do you have anything else you'd like to ask of me? If you can't think, then I am in the phone book, call me.
You don't return your calls, John. I called you once, and you didn't call me back.
Oh, geez, I'm sorry. I got Porter, I got, I got, yeah. But if you, yes, please, please call me. Mine's not available on your most days, so.
I'll just encourage, from my perspective, John, that you get that, if you're going to be the one to write it as soon as can be done and approved and out, so the general population understands the whole story.
Yeah.
We're going to be talking about activity here later.
Yeah, I mean, if anybody watched the meeting, it had to be held at the casino in Corona, Sunday night. It was quite interesting.
I tried to a little bit, but the audio on YouTube was marginal at best.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
I look forward to that information coming, too.
Yes.
And I also want to thank you for coming and explaining some.
Yes, I have recommended to my fellow commissioners, each one of them, some will call me back, that they should go to each of their governmental entities and have this discussion.
Appreciate it.
They should.
And I also appreciate that you attended that special meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, there was three commissioners who didn't, and I don't know why.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I believe that's all our pre-approved reports. We'll move into public comments. Is anyone here to make public comments regarding anything? Okay, moving then to communications. Devin?
I just want to point out that there was communication from the Chilwell Economic Development Partnership that you should have received, and if you have received that, then I am good on communications.
Moving then to mayor and department head reports. I would just like to report on a couple of things in regard to our food bank, that's the shortened term. Dave and Annie Robertson are retiring from their long, long-time service with the food bank, and the city council here did ask for them to be thanked for that. So Dory and I went to the last food bank meeting here in this room and gave them a recognition from the city. I won't read the whole thing, but it basically says, "Thank you for all of your time and dedication to serving the food bank." Annie immediately must have put this in the mail the next morning that says, "Thank you so much for honoring us with a proclamation from the city of Perry for our service to the PM S R C Food Bank. We are glad we could be of help to people through the years, Annie and Dave Robertson." And then Tuesday night, we had the National Night Out and had good attendance. We didn't count, but I think it was in the neighborhood of 200, definitely 150, maybe 200. Dory has written an article to send up to the Argus Press that says, "The Perry Police Department would like to thank everyone for the generous contributions from area businesses that created another successful National Night Out in the city of Perry Tuesday, August 3rd. Heartfelt thanks to the following businesses for their donations of food, beverages, and supplies to feed and entertain guests during the 22nd Annual National Night Out include Hungry Howie's, Darling Hardware, 7-Eleven, Burger King, CD Okamas Town, which is Mug and Bobs, Carl's Supermarket, McDonald's, PS Food Mart, Subway, and Road Trip Oasis. Gratitude is also extended to Perry Area Fire Rescue, Chilwell County Sheriff Department, Perry High School, Mayor Sue and Ron Hammond, city council members Mindy Galavine, Larry Lambert, and Randy Coffey, city events coordinator Dory Portman, the Perry DPW, city clerk Devon Miller, and city housekeeper Deborah Sifka, Kevin Dietrich, along with Brad and Michelle Fulman. Celebrated across the nation, National Night Out is an awareness program to promote crime and drug prevention awareness, generate support for and participation in local anti-crime programs, strengthen neighborhood spirit and police community partnership, and send a message to criminals, letting them know that neighborhoods are organized and fighting back. We had children playing games, tug-of-war, and the firemen put together the neatest thing. Dory's got pictures on the website, so please take a look at them. But they built two houses out of wood, I don't know what kind, but they were just leaning up against some supports. They had windows cut in them, and in those windows, there were flames made out of wood and painted to look like flames. Then people could Then people could spray the fire hose at those windows and put the flames out, and it made the flames fall down, so it looked like they were putting the fire out. So we have pictures of a lot of children doing that, but I saw a lot of adults doing that too. So that was really neat. Very nice. Now we'll move to department head reports. Devin, did you say you had one?
I do. So in your packet, you had received some information, and it's called initiative petition, and this is my first experience receiving this, and so I have been working with a city attorney and reading charter and state statute. So at this point, I have certified, um, the petitions and have contacted the association. Uh, there are deadlines to meet. They had to have these petitions in by July 27th, by 5:00 PM, and they met that. Um, there's also the ballot proposal that they want to go to the November election. Must, um, be into the county clerk by August 10th. Again, we're, we're following statute, uh, doing a lot of research. English and I have been best friends lately, so in the meantime, we have learned, um, under any other business, you received a resolution, and I am asking you, um, to consider that under any other business, so that we get this properly moving forward according to statute. If you have any more questions about it, um, like I said earlier, um, feel free to get ahold of me, but at this time, the people are asking for a ballot proposal.
And we will address that under any other business, um, at the end of the meeting. John, do you have a report?
So we're still out locating, uh, all of the buried assets, so you're going to see a lot of red and green paint predominantly on the north side of the tracks, Perry Lakes, all the way out to the high school, Lansing Road. Tentatively barring the weather, next week, we should have everything marked and loaded up, and then we'll start working on, uh, how to use the, the system, hopefully. So that, that's, I got, he's scheduled to be here all next week, so you'll see people around with him.
Larry, I have a question for you.
One thing, John, I, I thought that came to mind because Eric and Jim came to our front yard yesterday and brought to mind that we probably could look at some communication, and more specifically, is I understand that when the folks come in, we're at an outside organization that's going to be doing the, the GPS portion of it, correct?
Yeah. Uh, real community assistance program.
Okay.
Through USDA.
I would suggest that we might want to consider putting some short blurb together that we post at Carl's and maybe on our announcement section of the website, just to let the organization and all the residents know that you're going to see some people, you saw blue paint going down and things, that was our city workers prepping for, and now we're going to have the outside organization coming in, uh, doing a week's worth or a couple weeks' worth of, you know, area specifics, just to make certain.
It's my shortcoming on that. I've been talking about it, I guess I just, you know, it, it's been, it was like the paving project, I couldn't guarantee because they, they're working in Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, and Wisconsin.
Right. Ultimately, the paving project, you did have a little blurb that made Facebook and things, and said, "About this time, here are the streets that are going to be done, so be aware." I'm not being critical, I'm just suggesting that it may help alleviate some questions if you looked at.
Yeah.
And with, and just a little blurb out there for everybody to become aware of.
I mean, most of the time, a DPW worker is near where they are, and we're in, you know, uh, you know, we're not disturbing major parts of people's yards.
Oh, no. More curiosity in terms of.
And it's typically done right away.
People.
Yeah. Um, so I'm hoping it'll be done by the end of next week, so I can put something together that, post it wherever you want.
We talked about it outside of here, just a thought.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, it, it was asked of us to inquire about mosquito spraying. I worked with Shirley, we made some inquiries. Uh, there's various cost ranges, there's various ways to go about it. Um, you know, fogging the streets, doing backyard spraying with backpack sprayers, uh, is looking about $50,000 to $60,000 a time. Uh, we, we looked into aerial, uh, there's a guy that does aerial spraying, uh, so I sent him a map where we would typically, all the residential areas and businesses, that's about $20,000 to $30,000 at a time. So there's various ways, I don't know how much we want to talk about it. Uh, villages, I, I did talk to a couple other municipalities that do it, but, uh, I'm not, it's up to you guys how you want to handle it.
Questions for John about that, anybody? I think we'll just give that more thought.
Okay. And then day-to-day operations with DPW. If anybody has anything for me?
John, would you do me a favor? Hand these cough drops to Mr. Plama.
Well.
Give these cough meds to him. There we go. Okay, I think that's it for department head reports. I didn't miss anybody. Kyle's on vacation and Joanne's off. So moving forward to committee reports, whoever wants to go first?
I'll just do a quick one on the Finance and Ordinance Committee. We will be meeting next Monday as a group. Uh, we're going to be talking later in the agenda about, uh, the enforcement discussion we've had going on, and we'll probably be doing a first reading later, but what I'll let everybody know is that we are moving forward since our discussion here to fore has been around enforcement of the zoning ordinance and what we can do. We're now going to begin to have some discussion about the other codified ordinances that aren't contained in the zoning ordinance in terms of what we should be looking at in terms of enhancing our wording and enforcement in those areas, so stay tuned, more to follow. We've picked a couple of ordinances that appear to be the primary ones to start with because it's a voluminous effort to undertake, and we need to get started.
Huge. Uh, Bob, did you have a report?
Um, yeah, I gave everybody, I sent out minutes for the last two meetings. Um, we did decide to switch it from every month to every other month, just seemed like more getting our stuff done and, um, things, but we did have Kyle Fox come to our last meeting and to discuss the concern of vandalism in the parks and how we can curb that, and his report was very good, and we haven't had any vandalism for the last 12 or 15 years since he, that he knows, or any significance. Um, and some ideas of how we can get our youth more involved in the parks and in the city, so we have some things working on that. And then we'll have, we'll give a proposal to the council and hopefully by the, before the end of the year for sure, open up bathrooms and do some other stuff, so.
Very good. Um, Mindy, personnel?
Um, our personnel committee has some recommendations. Um, I just got this to show you in case, hopefully, remember, the employee compensation packages that were done up for us, and our recommendation is that we present these to each employee when it's time for them to have their evaluation. We'll give it to them about a week before their evaluation, and they're to bring it with them to their evaluation. And they will need to sign it, and it'll be kept on record, and it, we just thought it would be helpful for them to see, um, that they're compensated more than just their salaries. And, um, we also are recommending that a member of personnel committee attend the And, um, also our information given to the employee in case they want to have any further discussion after their evaluation. So that's today.
We do have that as an agenda item, um, under new business and under amendments to personnel policies, so we will address that later on in the meeting based on Mindy's, uh, report. So moving on then, I think we've had all the committee reports, anybody else? I think that's all. Moving to presentation and approval of the bills, I would just like to have you aware of, when you look at the bill under the English Law Office, um, you'll see the total, 2,0325. When, when he sent in his bill, it showed the breakdown of how that total is arrived. There was $1,087.50 that were all charges related to us getting the injunction to tear down the dangerous burned-out house. Um, so Joanne is going to turn that in to the insurance company as part of the total bill for the demolishing and so on, and hopefully they will reimburse us that amount. Maybe part of it, maybe all of it, but we'll try. So I just wanted you aware of that. Anybody want to approve the bills?
I move that we approve payment of the bills. I support that.
Ben moved and seconded to approve the bills as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, moving to old business, discussion with possible approval of the website development. Larry, I'm going to let you take it over there.
We've had discussion here in the past about the need to make some changes from IT right, that's currently been supporting our website, to a new, uh, website developer, and I talked previously about, uh, working with the Shoemaker Technology Group to that end, said we'd go out and get some competitive folks and information and work with them to establish a package, and in a minute, we'll talk about potentially approving that package. Uh, without getting into a lot of numbers, we did go out and with Dory's help, did some competitive analysis of other websites that other municipalities have, put together by other website developers, and the numbers that we'll be talking about are very competitive in that regard, actually very, very competitive in that, that regard. All of you received a package in your, in your information that was not, that was all there, plus a little bit, from a timing perspective, subsequent to that being Devin putting that in their package, the Business Affairs and Technology Committee has met, and the recommendation we'll talk about is a consensus of, of that committee. Uh, we'll be open to any questions before we get, we see a motion, but that, after meeting with Shoemaker, uh, they are recommending the goal package that, that is in there as the best fit for our organization and our size. Uh, they are going to, what, there's a site that was developed, a couple sites that we liked as a committee, that they're going to work to pattern our new website look after those, and those happen to be, uh, Comstock Park is one, and help me, Mindy, or Mike, or Randy, excuse me, with the, the other one, but it was very, very similar, uh, that we'll have a, a cleaner button-type look, et cetera, as a part of a streamlining.
Also, it's common to me is Williams Town.
Okay. But we'll have plenty of opportunity, needless to say, to, to see the development as it, as it goes forward, so, uh, any questions from anyone at this point in time?
I just had a couple. Who's ed, who's writing the, the copy, I guess, you know, all the, writing all the information? Are they doing it, or is city doing it?
The development will be done by them, we will be providing the information, obviously. A lot of, the first part of it will be setting up the framework, and, uh, much of the information we currently have will be reformatted and transferred to the new website framework, if you will.
If who's responsible.
But the content will be providing the structure.
Will provide the content, and then who edit is, edits that?
Oh.
You can tell I'm married to a writer. They are. They edit it, so they.
Or we can.
Or we can.
We have the option of both.
Let them edit, but is someone going to check just to make sure, I mean, the best editors in the world?
We will be sending, we will be sending them the information to put up there, but we also have the right to put it up there.
Okay.
So actually, nothing has to change as we're currently doing it, but we have put the option on it that if, um, as events expand, and there's several going throughout the year, there was that consideration of, then Dory doesn't have to be watching it constantly of, of banning it, she can send it and it's being worked on.
Okay, that was my next question, like, who's, who's editing the website as, on an ongoing basis, like, when we add an event or whatever? Because I just, we're looking for Devin's personnel, they're not, you know, highland, you guys have to do that, or we're going to argue them, are they doing it?
We've always been the ones that was watching our website, but I think you understand now that we can physically do it at the office, or if we don't have the time.
We can ask now, but do they, do they charge us a fee if we call up and say, "We need to add an event, we can do this," do they charge?
Yeah, let me clarify, yeah, there was two levels in the package that you saw for hosting and maintenance.
Right.
The $500 per year version, they would host it, and basically, we did all of the, we, yeah, Devin, Dory, et cetera, did all of the updates, et cetera, they would help if need be. Uh, the option B would be, uh, they would also handle the maintenance, as Devin indicated, if we wanted to send them the information, they'd post it, et cetera, or, uh, the office here would have the opportunity, if it was something we needed to get posted quickly, uh, and they couldn't do it, and, yeah, the same day, if we needed to get up, we would have the opportunity to do that here.
So some, just a flat monthly fee and it would cover all those to your things?
Yearly fee.
Yearly fee.
Yearly fee.
You were putting $250.
It's these, these two options.
Okay, just what I, you know, what I was trying to get, it's like, if we call up and say, "Oh, I had, you know, there's a baseball game, add that, oh, that's $25," and then all that's.
No, it.
And we'll do that next week, so, you know, that's what I was trying to.
No, it's a, it's an annual, annual fee. Uh, we basically will be paying for the development of the website and an annual hosting and maintenance fee, and then, uh, the other thing that's in the, the motion, uh, one of the other things we have to be cognizant of is that, uh, as they develop the website, we have to be ADA compliant, American Disabilities Act compliant for sight impaired folks, et cetera, they will do that, uh, as they develop the website, and what the proposal will include also is on an annual basis, they would do a complete review of our website once a year to make certain that we hadn't strayed either through our fault or something that they did to take us out of ADA compliance.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? With that, I will start a motion then, moving that the Perry City Council approve a website development maintenance proposal with Shoemaker Group, which will include the following: website development, what they call their goal package, a one-time fee of $1,750. Website hosting and maintenance, as I described earlier, option B, which would be hosting, and they would do, uh, quite a bit of the maintenance, $750 for each year for commitment of three years, and that $750 would, uh, come into play in years two and three. And then also, as I mentioned earlier, ADA compliance verification, annual review of $150 each year for the, in a period of three years, and authorize the mayor and or clerk to sign said proposal.
Second.
As moved by Larry and seconded by Bob, looking for approval for the, um, website development motion just made, all those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Larry. That was a lot of work, too. That was a lot of work, too, so thank you, Devon and Dory, thank her.
A lot more to follow now, wouldn't you?
Yeah, that's the truth. Okay, moving then on to possible approval of the marketing agreement with service line We've received a revision to the couple of questions we had last time to this marketing agreement, I think you've all had that, and had opportunity to review it, so I'll just ask if there's any discussion regarding that.
Did we get the scene clarification, I'm sorry, we may have, and I may not look at it, on the service line?
We did.
From the valve to the...
It's been corrected, it's from the curb stop to the...
To the exterior of the building.
The exterior of the building wall. Yes, curb stop to the external wall of the home, it's changed.
And that's in the Exhibit A or the attachment?
Yeah, right, to the very back page. Anything else? Anybody wants to chime in?
The other thing I was concerned about that I voiced last time, and I see that we have the ability as an organization to review any marketing information before they would send it out to our city residents, I'm just concerned that we don't infer that we're responsible for anything down the road if there was an issue, and I'm comfortable as long as we're able to see it up front that we're okay.
Looking then for motion if you do want to enter into this marketing agreement.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the city has received a request to enter into a marketing agreement attached here too, from Utility Services Partners Private Label Incorporated, doing business as Service Line Warranties of America, and whereas the city desires to enter into the attached marketing agreement with Utility Services Partners Private Label Incorporated doing businesses as Service Line Warranties of America, therefore, it is resolved that Mayor Sue Hammond is hereby vested with the authority to enter into the attached marketing agreement as written.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
It's been moved by Stephen, seconded by Larry, as the motion was read. All those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on then to our possible first reading of zoning ordinance amendment number 354 regarding violation enforcement, and Larry, our chairman of that committee, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay, as you recall, last time we left this item as no action taken, we wanted to get the opportunity for the Finance and Ordinance Committee to meet, review it, which we have done, and we sent a couple of minor revisions back to a just an English or city attorney, he has come back and approved those changes, and I think that we're ready to move forward unless there are any other questions by this group before we start in our first reading.
Any questions or discussion regarding that?
Here we go, I will, I will start with seven pages, and if my, I'll call in sometime, if my Bob lets me down here, we'll add for it.
If we'd like, Devon did make a recommendation to me, I'm gonna ask her to explain what we can do, go ahead.
I appreciate what the mayor is doing, is that she's had the motion by, second by, and then you guys take turns reading it, and then you're not going back to that second that's already in place.
Okay.
So if you want to do that, and you're nominated, I guess, Larry, for the reading.
Okay. I move that zoning ordinance amendment 354 regarding violation enforcement, and which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption.
And if I could just have a second on that, then we'll go ahead and do the reading.
I'll second that.
Steve, okay, thank you, go ahead.
Okay. The City of Perry zoning ordinance number 354, section 17.06E, is amended, and the following cited paragraph shall be inserted instead as follows. Section 17.06 Enforcement E. The city council, the zoning administrator, or their duly authorized representatives are hereby charged with the duty of enforcing the ordinance, and are hereby empowered to commence and pursue any and all necessary and appropriate actions and/or proceedings in the district court or circuit court of Chiwase County, Michigan, or any other court having jurisdiction to restrain and/or prevent any noncompliance with or violation of any of the provisions of this ordinance, and to correct remedy and/or abate the nonconformance or violation. And it is further provided that any person aggrieved or adversely affected by this noncompliance or violation may institute suit and/or join the City of Perry in the suit to abate the same. One, definitions. As used in this section, authorized local official means a police officer or the zoning administrator who is hereby legally authorized to issue municipal civil infraction citations. Two, the procedure to enforce zoning violations. Point A, initial identification of a zoning ordinance violation. The zoning ordinance administrator shall meet with any individuals responsible for a violation of this ordinance and to educate and inform them of the infraction. The alleged violator should have a minimum of three business days to take corrective action, evidence in writing with agreement of the zoning administrator to correct the alleged violation. If corrected timely, no further action will be taken. B, written notice. If violation is not addressed based on the initial discussion with the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator will document the situation using a zoning violation notification form approved by the city council for the City of Perry, and present a copy to the individual responsible for the infraction. The notification shall specify the violation and provide that the violation must be addressed within three business days, or a municipal civil infraction citation may be issued. C, continued violation, and the event and alleged violation continues after written notice, the authorized local official is authorized to issue a municipal civil infraction in the sole discretion of the, excuse me, authorized local official, the authorized local official may issue a municipal civil infraction citation without evidence, verbal, or written notification as provided above. Three, municipal civil infraction. Any violation or failure to comply with a zoning requirement herein is a municipal civil infraction, and authorized local official, including the zoning administrator, may issue a municipal civil infraction citation upon personally witnessing a violation. The zoning administrator may also issue a citation to a person if, based on investigation of a complaint by someone who has allegedly witnessed the person violate an ordinance and/or a violation which is a municipal civil infraction, the official has reasonable cause to believe that the person is responsible for a municipal civil infraction, and if the city attorney approves in writing issuance of the citation. Point four, minor. If the person is cited as a minor, that individual shall be permitted to appear in court or to admit responsibility for a civil infraction without the necessity of appointment of a guardian or next friend. A court having jurisdiction over the municipal civil infraction shall have jurisdiction over the minor, and may proceed in the same manner as if the individual were an adult. Point five, parties. A municipal civil infraction action is a civil action in which the defendant is alleged to be responsible for a municipal civil infraction as defined by state law and this code. The plaintiff in the municipal civil infraction shall be the City of Perry if the alleged municipal civil infraction is a violation of this code. Any other city ordinance designated the violation as a municipal civil infraction, or state law designating a violation as a municipal civil infraction. Point six, continuing violation. As provided for in this section, each act of violation and every day upon which a violation is permitted or suffered to exist or continuals shall constitute a separate violation, and shall be punished separately upon admission or determination of responsibility. The penalty provided by this section shall apply to any amendment or addition to this section, or to the provisions of this code defining substantive violations of this zoning, whether or not such penalty is reenacted in the ammendatory ordinance.
Would you like somebody else to read for a while? Steve, you want to jump in there?
I will. Number seven, disposition of municipal civil infraction cases. A, if a defendant is determined to be responsible or responsible with explanation for a municipal civil infraction, the judge or district court magistrate may order the defendant to pay a civil fine cost as provided for by law, and if applicable, damages and expenses as provided in Michigan compiled laws, section 8733 apostrophe two. In order of judgment, the judge or district court magistrate may grant a defendant permission to pay civil fine costs and damages and expenses within a specific period of time or in specific installments. Otherwise, the civil fines, costs and damages and expenses are due immediately. If a defendant is ordered to pay a civil fine, the judge or district court magistrate shall summarily tax and determine the cost of the action, which are not limited to the cost taxable in ordinary civil actions, and may include all expenses, direct and indirect, to which the plaintiff has been put in connection with the municipal civil infractions. Up to the entirety of judgment, cost of not less than $9 or more than $500 shall be ordered, except as otherwise provided by state law. Costs shall be payable to the general fund of the plaintiff.
Yeah.
And in addition to ordering the defendant to pay a civil fine cost and damages and expenses, the judge or district court magistrate may issue a writ or order under Michigan compiled laws, section 8302B. The section of civil fines and costs to be imposed for municipal civil infractions, which is required to be posted, shall also be readily available for the public inspection. The schedule need not include all municipal civil infractions. The schedule may include cases on the basis of a defendant's prior record of municipal civil infractions. C, a default in the payment of a civil fine cost or damages or expenses ordered pursuant to state law, and this code, or an installment of the fine cost or damages or expenses as determined by the court, may be collected by a means authorized for the enforcement of a judgment pursuant to state law. D, if a defendant fails to comply with an order or judgment issued pursuant to state law within the time described by the court, the court may proceed under Michigan compiled laws, section 8729, 8731, or 8733 as applicable. E, a defendant who fails to answer a citation or notice to appear in court for a municipal civil infraction is guilty of a misdemeanor as provided for in state law. F, default in payment of fines, costs, damages, or expenses. A, if a defendant defaults in the payment of a civil fine cost or applicable damages or expenses as provided in state law, or any installment as ordered, the court, upon the motion of the plaintiff, or upon its own motion, may require the defendant to show cause why the defendant should not be held in civil contempt, and may issue a summons order to show cause, or a bench warrant of arrest for the defendant's appearance. Aye, aye. If a corporation or an association is ordered to pay a civil fine cost or damages or expenses, the individuals authorized to make disbursement shall pay the fines, cost, or damages, or expenses, and their failure to do so shall be civil contempt unless they make the showing required in this section. Aye, aye, aye. Unless the defendant shows that the default was not attributable to an intentional refusal to pay the order of the court, or to a failure on his or her part to make good faith effort to obtain the funds required for payment, the court shall find that the defendant constitutes a civil contempt, and may order the defendant committed until all or a specific part of the amount due is paid. Four, it is, if it appears that the default in the payment of a fine cost or damages or expenses does not constitute civil contempt, the court may enter an order allowing the defendant additional time for payment, reducing the amount of the payment, or of each installment, or revoking the fine cost or damages or expenses. G, fines. Each municipal civil infraction shall carry a fine of $50 for each occurrence. All subsequent offense for the same or similar violation by the same defendant shall carry a fine of $200, and shall be denoted on the municipal civil infraction citation.
Larry, do you want to take over?
Sure. A, issuance in service of municipal civil infraction citation. Municipal civil infraction citations shall be issued and served by authorized local officials as follows. A, the time for appearance specified in a citation shall be within a reasonable time after the citation is issued. B, the place for appearance specified in the citation shall be the 61st District Court. C, each citation shall be numbered consecutively, and shall be in a form approved by the state court administrator. The original citation shall be filed with the district court, copies of the citation shall be retained by the city and issued to the alleged violator as provided in state law. D, a citation for a municipal civil infraction shall be signed by an authorized city official, shall be treated as if it were made under oath, if the violation alleged in the citation occurred in the presence of the official signing the complaint, and if the citation contains the following statement above the date and signature of the official. I declare under the penalties of perjury that the statements above are true and to the best of my information, knowledge, and belief. E, an authorized local official may issue a citation to a person if... Aye, based on investigation, the official has reasonable cause to believe that the person is responsible for the municipal civil infraction, or... Aye, aye, based on investigation or complaint by someone who allegedly witnessed the person commit a municipal civil infraction, the official has reasonable cause to believe that the person is responsible for the infraction, and the city attorney approves in writing the issuance of the citation. F, municipal civil infraction citations shall be served by authorized city official as follows. Aye, except as provided below, an authorized city official shall personally serve a copy of the citation upon the alleged violator. Aye, aye. If the municipal civil infraction involves the use of or occupancy of land, a building or other structure, a copy of the citation does not need to be personally served upon the alleged violator, but may be served upon an owner or occupant of the land, building or structure by posting the copy on the land or attaching the copy to the building or structure. In addition, a copy of this citation shall be sent by first-class mail to the owner of the land, building, or structure at the owner's last known address. Nine, contents of the municipal civil infraction citation. All municipal civil infraction citations shall contain the following information. A, a municipal civil infraction citation shall contain the name and address of the alleged violator, a municipal civil infraction or infractions alleged, the place where the alleged violator shall be, appear in court, the telephone number of the court, and the time at or by which the appearance shall be made. B, further, the citation shall inform the alleged violator that he or she may do one of the following. A, admit responsibility for the municipal civil infraction by mail, in person, or by representation at or by the time specified for appearance. Aye, aye, admit responsibility for the municipal civil infraction with explanation by mail, by the time specified for appearance, or in person or by representation. Aye, 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 excuse me, deny responsibility for the municipal civil infraction by doing either of the following. One, appearing in person for an informal hearing before a judge or district court magistrate without the opportunity of being represented by an attorney unless a formal hearing before a judge is requested by the city. Two, appearing in court for a formal hearing before a... Two, appearing in court for a formal hearing before a judge with the opportunity of being represented by an attorney. C, the citation shall also inform the alleged violator of all of the following. I, that if the alleged violator desires to admit responsibility with explanation in person or by representation, the alleged violator must apply to the court in person by mail or by telephone or by representation within the time period specified for appearance and obtain a scheduled date and time for an appearance. I, I, that if the alleged violator desires to deny responsibility, the alleged violator must apply to the court in person, by mail, by telephone, or by representation within the time specified for appearance and obtain a scheduled date and time to appear for a hearing unless a hearing date is specified on the citation. I, I, I. That a hearing shall be an informal hearing unless a formal hearing is requested by the alleged violator or the city. I, V, that an informal hearing in the alleged violator must appear in person before a judge or district court magistrate without the opportunity of being represented by an attorney. V, that an informal hearing in the alleged violator must appear in person before a judge and will have the opportunity of being represented by an attorney retained at his or her own expense. D, the citation shall contain a notice in boldface type stating that the failure of the alleged violator to appear within the time specified in the citation or at the time scheduled for a hearing or appearance is a misdemeanor and will result in entry of a default judgment against the alleged violator on the municipal civil infraction. E, the citation for a municipal civil infraction signed by an authorized local official must be treated and made under oath if the violation alleged in the citation occurred in the presence of the authorized local official, signed a complaint, and if the citation contains the following statement immediately above the date and signature of the official. I declare under penalties of perjury that the statements above are true and best of my information, knowledge, and belief. All the other provisions of said ordinance, not inconsistent with the above amendments, remain full in effect. This amendment shall take effect thirty days from the date of publication.
We've heard the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment three fifty-four. It's been moved and seconded that this be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for all that reading there, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on then to new business. And that first item is the mayor's appointments. These are appointments to two positions that opened on the CISA board due to terms expiring August first. And I have appointed John Plowman to continue to serve on that board, and I've asked Tim DeLu, who's here, to also serve on that board in the second position. Does anybody have any questions or discussion in regard to those appointments?
I do.
Yes.
I do not feel that it's appropriate if someone who has served on CISA or in other committees would be removed if they've been doing a good job.
Anybody have any other discussion they'd like in favor of that? I would just address that, Mindy, simply because you stated it. The, he was, Dean was not removed. His term expired. And it is and always has been the option of the mayor based on council approval to fill that appointment with someone else. So I did thank Dean for his years of service, and he appreciated that, but I feel that this time it's important to put someone with Tim's experience and knowledge on the board. Thus, my recommendation for that appointment. Any other?
And it's nothing against Tim. I think he'll do a fine job. I just don't think that we should take people off that have been doing a good job.
I appreciate your empathy for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments, questions?
I've got one other comment, and that's with regard to Mr. Plowman. And I was concerned coming into this meeting by his presence and comments. I've elated my concerns, other than I will once again emphasize in my mind the importance of communicating the rest of the story so that the residents of the city of Perry will understand what you can share as the circumstances behind all of the things that they've read here before, so that we, as we make an appointment this evening, the residents are aware that we're doing with full knowledge.
Anyone else have any comments, discussion?
John, you've been on the fireboard for how long?
Nineteen seventy-nine.
Thank you. And Tim, are you actively a firefighter now?
No.
Okay, thank you.
John, I do have one question. How long have you served now as chairman of CISA since Bill's passing?
When we reorganized into CISA in two thousand and five, and I chaired, I chaired the committee since two thousand and five.
Oh, you have, okay. I was of the understanding that Bill Colby had served as chairman.
He had served chairman until that time.
Okay.
And we kind of switched roles a little bit. It really wasn't any big deal. He and I had been on the board. He, from seventy-three, and me from seventy-nine. Weston Klein appointed me, yeah, way back, and when it was just the fireboard.
Yeah.
Yeah. And reorganization in two thousand and five, and I know Steve Wallace
So I was wrong.
was there for all of it.
It was difficult.
It was difficult, yes. But anyway, the organization has really flourished. We've now taken, I think it's ten jurisdictions now. Durants come on, and they're very satisfied. They, I mean, a lot of these jurisdictions, a lot of their meetings would take hours to discuss how enamelance would be served and so on. We have a little growing, paid for getting bigger. We've done some internal things. We, one of our board members is there on the direction of the board, and that's Lori Godfrey. She works every Monday, or sometimes she works other times to help Guy, our chief. And we have a personal committee that's been quite active lately, and it's a good committee. And so if you're, anybody's welcome. We meet on the third Monday. We have the meeting at the township hall because of COVID. It looks like we're going to stay here for a while now again. But normally, we would meet at fire station number one, which is downtown Perry in the east area.
But you meet at Perry Township Hall?
Yeah, right.
At what time is that?
Seven o'clock the third Monday. It was always the chair.
At Perry Township Hall?
Yeah. We just ran out there, and we've, through COVID, that's where we met.
Sure.
And Dean, how many years did you have?
A little over fifteen years.
Appreciate it very much.
It was great.
That's a lot of dedication.
Everybody on the board was great to work with. They worked real well together. I got to say, I was a little disappointed not being reappointed. A little thrown off. I'm not real, I'm not saying I'm not real happy about it. I thought we got along real good. She told me there were some issues with the board and with the chief, and that was the first time I heard of it, when she decided not to reappoint me. So if I disappointed anybody, I apologize. So I just wish that, could have left a little bit better terms.
Anybody else have any other discussion or questions? If not, I look for motions.
I move that we approve John Plowman as the mayor's reappointment to the CISA board with a term to expire August twenty twenty-five.
Second. It's been moved by Stephen, seconded by Bob, that we approve John Plowman as mayor's reappointment to the CISA board with a term to expire August twenty twenty-five. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And in regard to the second appointment, I need a motion.
I move that we approve Tim DeLu as the mayor's appointed to the CISA board with a term expiring August twenty twenty-five.
It's been moved by Randy, seconded by Larry, that we approve Tim DeLu as the mayor's appointment to the CISA board with a term to expire August twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by nay. We have to move now to a roll call because of the negative, the nay vote. Devin, will you do that roll call, please?
Aye.
Ty Porter?
Aye.
Randy member?
Aye.
Mindy Yelby?
No.
Randy Coffey?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you for your willingness to serve. And Dean, once again, thank you for your service. It's been appreciated.
And again, it's nothing against you. I'm sure you'll do a good job.
Moving on in our new business, possible adoption of the ordinance amendment that was read at our last meeting, number three fifty-five regarding school property speed limit. Just looking for this resolution, if indeed we're going to adopt this ordinance, three fifty-five.
I move that ordinance number three fifty-five, which amends school property speed limit and which has been read at the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting, be adopted.
Sure. It's been moved by Larry and seconded by Bob that we adopt ordinance number three fifty-five as read in that motion. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have a proposal that's been requested from the Historical Society for the McQueen House in regard to maintenance of the gutters. I think all of you have this estimate from Leaf Filter North of Michigan LLC. Billy's concerned about pine needles getting in the gutters and plugging them off. And I just want to tell you too that with the completion of the trimming of the dead branches out of those pine trees, Mr. Dunsmore, who did that work, when he called to let me know that he was finished with that work, he said, I'd like to just tell you that I really think you need to trim the pine tree branches back farther from the gutters, or you're going to have gutters full of pine needles. So I thanked him for that, told him I would pass that recommendation along. But in regard to the cost of these covers, we could either buy a car or put covers on the covers. It's expensive. We can certainly think about it. We can talk about it. We can look at it. But if we were to want to do something like this to help with the maintenance of the building, I think it would have to be something that we put money aside for. You know, we'd have to sign, you know, say, let's put this much money each year into the McQueen House account, and then when we get enough, then we'll do that. But I've said my piece, so now, what do you guys think? I, I'll be quiet.
I only have one question, and it's for John. Is the DPW capable of cleaning the gutters once or twice a year at the McQueen House?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Is that how often you usually do it? Is it like once a year or?
The second story, I don't ever remember cleaning them in ten years, and they never got plugged the, over the porch. I remember cleaning it once or twice because that roof pitch is a lot of shoveling. So that's, that's been my experience with it in ten years.
But you don't think it would be an issue to monitor that? Take a peek at them every now and again?
I can just put it on the schedule and do it as long as we have a bucket truck. You know, we're probably going to be looking at getting rid of that thing, and I'll just rent something once in a while.
Okay. How's that sound?
Or you can set aside money for a course of time. It doesn't really matter.
We'll just do it on a aerial training. We'll just look.
The fire department still have that.
We'll just fly over there and take a look for you.
There you go. Okay. So would you like me to report something back to Billy in regard to the DPW will monitor? Well, we'll take care of it, not to worry about it, but we're not buying gutter covers.
I agree.
Yep.
I'm so glad. Thank you.
We will accept an donation from him if he wants to buy them.
I'll let him know that.
And I imagine there's other options out there that are, that's expensive.
Well, we've got the DPW. If they're, if they can do it, if they've got the equipment and the time, I
Have any problems yet? It's happened here, so.
Okay. Let's talk about the next item on the new business agenda, and that's discussion of the library back entry. John, at our request, has tried to get estimates from several companies in regard to setting up something for security that would allow the library to use the back entrance. We talked about that a few meetings back. And John has provided us with a set of estimates from ABT Commercial, a proposal for the cost of lease and the cost of purchase. Now, this is just a proposal. John has ongoing efforts to get other estimates, other ideas, and has suggested interacting with the library's IT company to see about setting something up that's interactive with their desktop computer, so security from the back door to the desktop computer. But also, John and Kyle have been talking about new security systems for all of the city's properties. So in my mind, and open to discussion certainly, is the thought that why put a Band-Aid on something if we're going to do general surgery later, you know, as far as money's concerned? As they look more into these new security systems, including the library in that, just get his report back in regard to that and how that might work out. And the library is looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, the internal building is going to have some changes where there might be like a straight shot from the front door to the back door kind of thing?
Yeah, there's been contractors coming in and giving estimates for that.
Yeah, yeah, there's been contractors coming in and giving estimates for that.
So that's in progress as well. Part of the question that came to us, that made us start looking at this, was when a resident was here at a meeting and said that there were concerns about people trying to get out of their car on Main Street to get to the library, especially if they had children with them, and that it wasn't very safe, and things like that. And John, feel free to jump in here, John had some thoughts today, he expressed to me about maybe designating some of the parking spots along the south side of the fire department as parking for the library. John, do you want to expand on that at all?
Well, there's like, three spots down over there across to the north of Huffy's. You know, that would be the only, lower traffic, we can't do anything on 52 to put a handicap type of thing out there. Anything at the back of the building, they're going to have to cross the alley. I kind of worry about making that little nook there, right? Because they're going to back out into blind traffic. So, you know, where the buildings are recessed and stuff around TDS, so that would be like an option to look at, to have a couple spots designated, library parking only, or, I don't know how many, and I don't know the demand, so.
Any other thoughts for discussion? How would you like John to proceed?
Is there a, do you have a timeline in mind, John, for the whole citywide security system?
Well.
You and Kyle?
So, my thoughts are, and I don't know the payoff on this facility here, we're going to have to free up some cash somehow in order to implement a whole, a whole thing. That is my thoughts, I don't know where we get the money.
A citywide system?
To do a citywide. I mean, you can do pieces, parts, all over the place, and everybody's, you know, we were looking at more like card codes for the water treatment plant, you know, everybody would get more, more along the lines of the school system, where, where they, they know who enters and exits buildings. Same with here, Food Bank would get issued stuff, just as an example, instead of keys, they would either use fobs and we could disable them, "I lost my stuff," whatever. I mean, I don't know, I think there's a few years left on this building to pay it off. That was because we're going to need exterior doors on the City Hall building, and get rid of these residential doors, because they're starting to. So, that was my vision, that there's no, I don't have a wrote-down plan, per se, it's just a thought process, and, you know, then Kyle said something about possible automatic locks at the park at certain times. So, you, you kind of need a, a master system to, to utilize, or I would, logically speaking, that's what I, so, it's, it's not immediate, I think that some of this is maybe a future project. I, I don't know how long of a timeframe you guys want to put on something like this. I would figure a little while though, more than a year. And we need to examine our finances and see where, where we can plug this in at.
And Jamie, could you answer for me, what kind of timeline that there may be doing construction at the library?
Well, we were thinking springtime, but I think in the meantime, what we can do is our IT person has installed cameras at our corona branch, because we've had issues in the back hallway. And those are relatively inexpensive, and we can pay for that. So you can view everything from the staff computer, because our circulation desk is at the front of the library, and it's, I don't know if any of you have been to the rear of the library, there's probably four or five rooms back there, so it's really a safety issue to have people enter back there without knowing, without being able to see. But I'm going to talk it over with Carol, I think if we put cameras in there, and then we have some kind of door ringer on, keep, keep the door unlocked during the day, have some kind of ringer, so that when somebody comes in, it alerts the staff that somebody's there. And if we put locks on all of the little rooms out there, so that people can't access it, I think that would probably be a good temporary solution, so people can enter through the back. I mean, we've had, we've had, at our corona branch, people try to sneak in our used bookstore area and stay after when we lock doors up, so it's a real concern, that part is a concern, but I think if we can get the doors locked, we might have to, the door's pretty old in the back, I, I don't know if, I'm assuming we can just keep it unlocked, I.
Yeah, it has a panic bar and a lock, so it can be.
So I think we could do a temporary fix and then have, but as far as a parking, designated parking spot right behind the library, Carol just got into an accident backing out, so I wouldn't do that, but maybe where the TDS trucks park, maybe.
I have a question, is there, do you have any, is there handicap parking at the library at all, does any, you know, signs, handicap?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because I was looking at ADA, so I ordered it to the mayor, and I think I sent it to John for parks, I just was trying to get information, so I know if I planned something for the park. And I know there's different requirements for ADA, for library, public, any public buildings, so, and I don't know what the numbers is off the top of my head, but you have to have, you know, the shortest distance possible to the entrance, so by making someone who's, let's say, in a wheelchair, to go from the back of the building all the way around, because you can't put it on 52, all the way around the front, I don't think we're compliant with ADA. And since the city owns that building, we could be in trouble.
I think those buildings got to fall under something else, because they're all in one line.
Nope, ADA is very specific, and very, and if you do any modifications or renovations, you have to comply with ADA. ADA's been around for 35 years, at least.
Well, could we not put a handicap parking spot or two in the parking lot?
Yeah, well, it has, I don't know.
And then they come to the back, to the back door, because we know we can't put them on Main Street, that's not our choice.
Unfortunately, no, that's right, that's beyond our control.
I mean, our only other spot would be where John's talking about, there on the south side, on First Street.
On First Street, you can do it there, perhaps, I, again, I don't know all the rules or regulations, I might come for just to make sure I didn't do anything in the park.
Charlie's dentist there, they have one or two spots there, doesn't any.
Right, but I believe we should do the same.
There isn't in that.
I don't know how that would affect the fire department, but I really do believe we should put at least one spot behind the library.
The best spot would be right beside the pool where you can't park, would be the perfect spot.
Rather than they can't back into the aisle.
Yeah, you're fine, you're beautiful right there, so then, it would actually be the best spot, you could pull.
And it has to be signed, otherwise it's not legal.
Big pool, you can put it on in, so.
And then your doors in the back, Jamie, can you get those, you know, those push-button toed, like I have one at my house, and you just push it in my garage, you push the button and it unlocks the door, so then the, your staff don't have to have a key to unlock that door.
Well, we would probably keep it unlocked.
Not, not the back door, not the main entrance of the library, I think that should be open, that's my opinion. But your offices or storerooms, whatever you have back there, to make it easy, they don't have to carry a key, maybe they do, just to make it so they don't have to unlock it or to get into.
I don't think it'll be an issue, I think just having a master key for the doors back there is fine, I don't think we need, it's just a lot of storage.
But you would do one where the stairs go upstairs?
We would, we would.
Then, when I saw that, John showed me that.
I invite everybody to come and visit and see what I'm talking about, it's, yeah. I, I think that would be difficult to, to lock every, to keep everything locked until the springtime, hopefully the entire library gets redone, and that, then the staff will be in the back, and it'll, it'll, this is kind of a Band-Aid, but I think it will work for those purposes.
Until we can do more of an evaluation of the citywide system, because why have one system here, a different kind of system there, you know, until you guys can finish your evaluation of that in a year, year and a half, whatever it takes to look at that.
It's going to take some time to get a company to do it, and, and this is not my thing, so I, I'm going to need a lot of help to figure it out, so.
It's going to be better for our corporate purposes, anyway, to do it all at once.
I agree, yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, is everybody okay with that? So John, can you do that handicap parking spot sign in the block behind? Do you want some help with that?
Well, I'm going to coordinate with the police chief.
Okay.
Because he's going to write tickets for people parking there.
Yeah.
Because they do it in the other one, or have.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to make sure that everybody's on board with it before I go ahead and do it.
Why don't you talk to him too about?
I don't know of any other things that we need to do to say, we're going to do it, but.
Yeah, talk to him and see, and ask him too about maybe one handicap in the parking lot, one on First Street on the side. I don't want to mess up Huffy's parking arrangements there, but, I, you know, let's see what we can do.
Okay.
I mean, we're trying, Jamie, we're trying.
I know, I know you are.
I thought this was going to be an easy thing, it's not.
It never is. But on our end, what we can do is we can install the cameras, that way the staff can see, you know, back there, and then if we leave it unlocked, we'll have to, like I said, get some kind of ringer, so that staff knows that people.
Yeah.
Does your IT have the capacity to make the little, you know, so, laser beam that you cross through and alerts the alarm? I have no idea, I, I know.
He's more of a software person, but he, at our corona branch, he, he wired cameras and then installed the software where we could view everything.
Right.
So he doesn't, he's not into surveillance.
Like NAS cameras or something?
No, he doesn't do the magnetic door remote lock and unlock, or anything like that.
It's kind of a similar.
Unless they're a hundred dollars.
Yeah, you can get a sort of pull alarm thing, line your doors, require, you have a pull in your backyard, you have, if you open a door, it has to set an alarm off at a time.
You plug it in, it's a magnet.
Yeah, that, or operated, whatever.
But they also have ones that are, that are motion sensor, you don't have to open a door or anything, you just break the beam.
Someone walks through, it breaks, it sets the alarm, right.
I, I have to tell you guys, John has spent so much time calling companies and meeting people there to try to get estimates, and he finally got one company, most of them won't even call him back, and the other ones say, "Yeah, I'll get you something," and they never do.
Oh, I know that.
Or the other ones don't ever even answer the phone, he can leave five messages. I personally would rather John use that time for other stuff that we need him to be doing. So how much time do we want him to devote to trying to do something more?
If you allow me, I'd like to just get some prices at, at work.
Sure.
Because I believe for less than a hundred dollars, we can do the motion sensor, so when someone walks past it, it automatically dings.
Okay, so Steve's going to help us out getting some estimates on.
Yeah, and it's nothing, there's nothing to install, John, it won't take ten minutes.
No, literally, the one we had in our old office was the magnet on the door, and you plug the chime into the plug, and it's done.
And the ones that I have, when a vehicle comes by, they're 500, they're 500 feet away.
Yeah.
The, the dinger itself is at my office, and the remote sensor's 500 feet away.
Yeah, super easy.
So, yeah, very inexpensive.
So you'll report back to John on what you find?
Yeah.
And then we'll coordinate with what you're getting, and hopefully.
I've got an old one, I may be able, if it's still functional, I'll just.
And John, you'll coordinate with Kyle about handicap sign?
Yep.
Okay. I think we've filled that, that works.
Oh.
All right, then let's move on to this discussion of the policy regarding employee participation in political activities. Kyle came to my office the other day before he left on vacation. Bye, Jamie, thank you. With the concern regarding the policy that restricts the employee's ability to endorse any particular candidate or political issue. I think you all have a copy of that policy, employee participation in political activities policy. As the police chief Kyle was telling me of his concern regarding that, feeling that it was a violation of his rights, the little voice from in the other room said, "I second that." And Devin would like to share with you her experience with this policy.
So, obviously this came up because there was an election that was a little rough, but this policy was created to protect us employees, was the wording, and my concern of this was, is that pretty much we already do all of this as employees, we have very good common sense. What happens sometimes is that, do you know me as the clerk, or do you know me as Devin Miller? Because when I'm on my time, I'm salaried no matter what, but I can write a letter, Devin Miller, and that doesn't mean it doesn't go to the Argus as city clerk. So, one of the things that I had asked, because we asked the labor attorney, who was the one to ask to put this together, and I said, "So you have departments that are salaried, depends how you know us." I choose to walk into a parade, what if you identify me as the clerk instead of Devin Miller? And the labor attorney's opinion was, "Don't do that." Because, and he didn't mean it mean, if you don't want to be challenged of who you are and what you're doing, then just don't walk in the parade. That was very frustrating as a person that wants to exercise my rights and to be able to support and do what I want to do. So although the intentions were good with this policy, you can look back on 15 years, John's 10 years, Joanne's 30 years, Kyle's 20 years now. Find anywhere in our history that we have not served the city right and disrespected, even if we had an opinion of who we supported. I think this restricts us, and we don't know when we're, our titles are going to be used and be challenged. And I just, I don't think it's, I don't think everything in this is necessary, we already know this.
Do nuts, how do I word this? In the political atmosphere that we now find ourselves in, no matter what side of the aisle you may be on, it doesn't matter what you do, is this a good time to rescind this and give the appearance of those things? Meaning, you say, "Oh, I can't walk into, into a rally of whatever, because I'm the clerk." I disagree with that, because you have your own personal time, but I also look at life a lot differently than our society seems to be doing right now. So, if somebody disagrees with whatever rally you're at, they may attack you. If they agree with you, they won't.
I'm an adult, it's my right, I, you shouldn't be protecting me. You as council and as a government should not need to be protecting me when I'm on my own time.
I don't disagree with that.
I think what he's trying to say is, if you were at anything, and it falls within legal limits of the law, you're fine, there's nothing they can do to you. But once you cross that line, now you are Devin Miller, clerk, and breaking the law.
No.
No, she's not breaking the law.
No, that's not what this is saying.
No, I'm not saying that.
This is saying what title you put on me.
That's how you got to go about looking at it.
But you're not protecting me, I can choose to walk out in that parade and be challenged, and that's my business.
Yes, you can do that.
My point is, is that you're actually putting a policy, you don't trust my actions, and you have to put it in writing. Now you have another employee that would just like to not put the city's name on it, but just to be able to utilize that their experience as their chief would like to endorse somebody, and this policy doesn't allow that either.
Kyle indicated to me that he would like to endorse a candidate in the upcoming election, and endorse that candidate by saying what he has to say about that person, and then say, Kyle walks, please. then say, "Kyle Box Police Chief." He doesn't, he did not want to put City of Perry Police Chief.
Right.
Just his credentials of police chief, like a doctor would say, M.D. or D.O. or whatever, R.M., you know, I don't know all those letters. But other people, other individuals do have, they're not, they're not at jeopardy of being fired from their job by stating an endorsement for a political candidate, and this policy is restricting that. What it says is, and the rest of it is, is really pretty benign, but the part that jumped out at me is where it says, "No employee may give the public the impression through his or her words or actions that the city and/or the employee in his or her official capacity is endorsing any political party or any particular candidate for local, state, or national public office."
So how do you know me?
That's a little tight.
So how do you know me? Now, I just got a compliment from a resident. I just shared this one a couple days ago.
Well, you got one a couple days ago, too.
And she said, "You are the, one of the best clerks in the county because you show no bias on either side. You can talk on both, on whatever is going on, and you give the facts. When we ask for it, you give the facts of what you know, and that's it."
Yeah, that's a little...
So anyways, if you keep it, that's fine. Respectfully, I am gonna walk in a parade in the future. I felt that I've had to walk on tiptoes enough, and now this is on the table. I am gonna endorse this Devon Miller if it gets in the paper outright. Ask me first. Don't assume if you keep this policy. And I'm just being honest with you because I still, you know, this policy does not restrict, not restrict me from my rights. This, this does not restrict my rights.
Has Justin looked at it?
Uh, no, I haven't asked Justin to look at it yet. I wanted to talk to you guys first and see.
It's not appropriate. This was made by our labor attorney. You don't take it from one attorney and give it to another. And he was just giving us a general, you know, a standard that he found, the labor attorney, that, that other places probably have used. It's...
I don't think I have...
He was requested to do that.
Hmm, okay. Have you felt hindered or oppressed in your opinions, political opinions, because you haven't been able to endorse somebody?
I haven't had a situation since that this happened that I've ran into it. But if it does, I, I, I have no problem supporting a, a person. I mean, I'll, I, I can talk details later to give an example.
Yeah, that's why I didn't know if it was right to ask, because I don't care.
I just went, I just went to the most controversial presidential thing, and that, to me, was common sense. Devon Miller, keep your mouth shut.
Well, that, that's what I'm trying to get at is the perception...
Don't tell anybody or anything like that.
The perception, because you are city clerk, the perception of you are this or you are that.
Should she be penalized because of a perception?
No, but I'm telling you, I get penalized because of a perception.
We all do.
I'm a big guy. I get penalized. I must, I must have high blood pressure. I must have this. I must have that.
Correct.
So the perceptions, but the perceptions right now are just, just exploding. It's ridiculous. We have, we, you know, I saw a flag today that just drove me nuts. Get over it, people. Okay? Let's move on, please. Let's move on.
Kyle is the one who came to me and said, "I would like to endorse a particular candidate, political candidate, but I don't feel that I can and say, 'Kyle Box Police Chief,'" and that's what I wanna do. I wanna give some credit or some energy to my, to my statement by saying who I am. And he, he, he said, "I don't, I don't feel like I can do that under this policy. Would you ask council to revisit that policy?"
How long has this policy been in effect? Two thousand seventeen?
Two thousand seventeen.
It was after the two thousand sixteen election.
Did we have a problem before the two thousand sixteen election?
We have never had a policy prior to that. And I, like I said, if you want, wanna talk, we can talk later. Otherwise, it's...
I'd like to get the background behind it, because I, I don't want, say this again, I don't want to infringe upon your rights because I agree with Steve. You shouldn't be penalized.
You typically are not. I just...
But I don't want, also don't wanna have the city have the appearance or perception that the city endorses a certain candidate or party or whatever. That's all.
By changing this policy, though, that doesn't give the perception that the city, the city favors one candidate or the other.
But I can have your sign in my yard and your sign in my yard. I can do all that. What's the difference?
Just nationally, you can, or statewide.
I can do whatever I want in my yard.
She should be able to.
Yes. So...
Yeah, it's your yard.
What I would recommend, sorry, Mindy, did we send this to the first committee? And I would be more than happy, although I'm not on the first committee, if some, if a member is not available, I'd be happy to work on this with you because I have to agree with some of the employees on this one.
I, I...
I do, too. I, I question, do we even need to, do we even need to have it?
Correct.
Yeah, we could wordsmith it, but it still ends up being, in my opinion, restrictive. You know, it was put in place by the prior administration as a city employee personnel policy, correct?
Yes.
So I think formally, we'd need to, and I don't know if we need to put on future agenda, I mean, we can send it to the personnel committee, or do we, or do we, can we, yeah, bring it to a motion and a vote this evening if we wanted to?
Well, I agree with Bob that we should look, have a little more, because myself, I didn't have any knowledge of this before today.
Okay.
So I believe the personnel committee should lead...
I read it a few days ago when I got it, but...
Right, but, but they should do some history or some background, find out why it was in place, and if in fact, again, it really needs it, but, but I don't believe it does. So we should do our due diligence and investigate.
I also don't wanna fuel the undue perception that we have, but I also don't wanna ignore it either.
Correct.
Because it is an issue and a problem, I think.
We just have to be careful of the number of people who wanna sit on the personnel committee because we can't have a fork.
Correct. If, if there's someone, I would be happy to say.
There's already three people there.
Correct.
So Mindy, I'll, I'll say that we'll turn it over to you, but in the meanwhile, also, it sounds to me like Devon is willing to spend a few minutes talking to anybody that wants to talk to her about what her experience was.
The policy doesn't look that bad if you take that one part out.
Exactly. That's what I...
I, I, I...
I mean, it's saying, "Don't do stuff on work time. Don't use city material, blah, blah, blah."
That's pretty clear.
Don't put stuff up near...
But we already have higher laws that already are in effect.
Right.
And Steve, if you guys want, you can't, you can't do, you can't, we can't do that already.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a, a problem with the bumper sticker. They can have a bumper sticker.
They're saying, I think, inside the building, maybe.
So it's...
You cannot visit my, my own vehicle. I did not have a bumper sticker.
And that's not, that's not right. The public, nor myself, knows what employee drives what vehicle. That's, that's the thing.
And I will admit that when we've had a bumper sticker, when there is an election, as the clerk, I have to do my due diligence, and I have to have them back their vehicle up in the back forty or park it in the garage. It cannot be within a thousand feet of the corner.
Always.
And that's a state law.
Jim will answer this and Brad, John. I've, it's nothing, I've been a firefighter for twenty-four years and been in some other jobs and everything where you just kinda, you gotta hold something back. You just gotta know. I mean, but to actually have a policy, that's up to you guys. But it's, it's sometimes, yes, it is my right. I can go do what I want. I can speak at my own house or do whatever I wanna do, but I don't know. It's, that is a little tight, though.
Okay, well, let's give some more time for each council member to review this, to talk to Devon or to Kyle or to both if they would like to do that. Let's do no action taken on this subject tonight, but move it to our next agenda for possible action and discussion, and have the personnel committee meet and review it and make some type of recommendation to the next council meeting regarding that. Does that sound okay? Nods all around. Okay. Any other business that may come before council at this time?
Oh, you missed one.
Oh, I did? Oh, gosh. I thought I did really good tonight.
Hey, look down to the last, the last discussion.
Discussion regarding amendments to personnel policy. That's the one. We did have the report from Mindy already from the personnel committee regarding the benefits package for the, each employee and their recommendation and how that benefit sheet should be used during their annual evaluation, showing them what the city pays in their benefits, but making it a part of their record, having them sign it, but also then having the mayor or one of the personnel, personnel committee people in attendance during that evaluation. The, I think that was it. Was that it, Mindy, as far as the recommendations? So that is what we need to open for discussion and see how you wanna, if you wanna make an amendment to the personnel policy regarding the use of that.
Do you have the authentic suggestion we talked about?
Yes, please. That would be great.
One of the thoughts that I had in place, being that the personnel committee has ordered the recommendations, Mayor had asked if I thought the labor attorney needed to help with it. I do not, I do not feel that you're violating any of our rights. You're just putting in procedure, first of all. And second of all, what I had suggested that could happen is that to use your recommendations, I could start working on the personnel policy by including the wording, and then it go back to committee for conversation or, "No, that's not what I mean," or anything like that, and then bring it in front of council was what I told her that if you would like, I could, I could offer that services. Or you could do it yourself, but anyways, I was just offering that. What'd you think?
Since I probably raised the idea way back when we got started.
Yes, you did.
It was all my fault. But in any case, I like the idea of, that the personnel committee has come up with, number one, is regarding information sheet, to share it at annual review time, and I think the idea of sending it, providing it a week ahead of time so that they can digest it, have any questions, et cetera, I think is a great idea and ask for having it. So I, I would support an adjustment personally to personnel policy to make that an annual item. It'll be new the first time possibly in the future. It will become a little bit more rogue in terms of, I saw this last year, but it's a good reminder in any case every year, even though the discussion may not be as lengthy as time of the review. And as for a second person in the actual review, I also personally think that's a good idea, just to give another sort of eyes as we go forward with individual employee development.
And how is that going to trickle down? I, I do not mind. I do, I am wondering of how, how is that gonna trickle down? How, how is that gonna affect? Because you, you have administration that is managing the people, and I support the thought that there's a comfort zone for the employee. But if they do not like their evaluation, how, what is the thought process, the, the procedure that will follow that? Because I don't truly see that in your recommendations, or would that be more of a work in progress?
See, like...
Just looking at me like, "What?"
Are you asking what, why are you sitting there?
Nope. I'm asking, eh, I'm, I don't, I understand why you're sitting there. You're giving a comfort zone and, and a feedback, and so that if that person wants to talk about it, once that, once that employee wants to talk to you, what are the procedure? What, what procedures do you have in place after that?
I, as an employee, wouldn't want a personnel member...
That's what I was gonna say.
...in my evaluation. What does that person know about my job, number one? Or my disciplinary past, if I had one? So I wouldn't wanna, I would maybe want a place to go to question, but I don't believe, feel I would want an individual in my professional development evaluation.
Your evaluation.
The way it was discussed, we're not, we're not evaluating you.
Right.
We are just there as an mediator, observer. So if something is said, I'm just gonna use you two. He said, she, these two said, who knows what went behind, on behind that door. She's gonna tell one story. She's gonna tell the other story. So that's why the third person, the neutral person is there. It has nothing to do with it, just with the personnel committee. That's all they're there for.
As a supervisor...
But this sounds like a reprimand. That doesn't sound like an evaluation.
Correct. An employee may feel intimidated.
Correct. I agree one hundred percent.
What you just said sounded like a reprimand. He said, she said. I'm been giving you evaluation. I'm sitting there.
If there's an argument after, so you're giving her an evaluation, and something is said and that you guys are discussing in your evaluation to Mindy.
We had a big fight.
There has, there has been, there has never been an evaluation with a fight, when a reprimand is when the fight's been there.
Yes, correct.
So what I'm telling you is what you just described is different. You described a reprimand, in my opinion, of he said, she said, in an evaluation. Even if the evaluation wasn't appealing to the employee, there was no debate, there was no argument. There was no...
But is information, has the employee felt that they can come talk to somebody?
I think that's, I think that's a great idea.
I like, I like the part of, there needs to be something put in place. What happens now?
I believe that it, I believe it's, your thought is great of being there available. Again, I don't know if in the room while evaluation is necessary, but I think it's a very, it's a very good thought of having a personnel committee where they can go to and talk because their immediate supervision is, I'm gonna use myself as example, or my boss. So you are opening up a door if they feel that their evaluation is unfair to go somewhere. So I am supporting what you're saying, but what I'm saying is if you're in the room hearing and seeing all of the feelings, then what is gonna happen?
Is the evaluations that we use written?
Yes.
Yes.
Then there's a copy of written, I do evaluations. So what I do is that there's three of us that generally that do them together with the employee because there's three managers. So each manager will write down their pros and cons of that employee. We give it to the employee, and then they sign it. They got it. Goes and then that, copies go to the HR and they put them into file. So there's no question about what was said or anything like that. It's all...
So all three are in the, in the evaluation meeting?
Yes. It's very informal, but it's just...
Right.
And I'm willing and implemented that policy four years ago, so they never did it before.
How do the employees feel about having all three?
They, they deal with us every day, so depending on who they work for. So the way we're set up is we have project managers. So if this foreman works for this project manager today, he might work for that project manager tomorrow, whatever.
Okay.
So we all have experience...
So that's a little different, yeah.
With that employee of being a foreman. So we only do the foreman. We make the foremans do their employees. So, but it's all written. It's, there's no hidden agenda. There's nothing.
University.
We ask for their feedback, and that's, you know, we jot down notes, and then we give it to HR.
We do the same thing at the university. Only when we do the performance, if you don't call it performance evaluation, we call it performance excellence. There's that much paperwork we have to do with each employee.
Right.
They have areas for their input. They can choose to sign or not sign.
Right.
That was my question, is what happens if they...
So now what happens when they...
Very unhappy with their employees.
Nothing.
You know, if they refuse to sign, then you know they, they have an issue. They can take it up then now in a private organization with HR. We don't really have HR.
So this is what we're implementing with, with, with the person, personnel committing? This is what I feel like. You are, you are becoming our HR. So again, we give the evaluations, which I, some, sometimes I'm by myself, sometimes I'm not. Again, kinda like what Bob was saying, it, it's, it's who they are already working with that is giving them the evaluation, but the employee... giving them the evaluation, but the employee has to feel comfortable that, okay, I felt that was unfair, and they need to know where they can go.
In the past.
So I agree with what you're saying, other than, do you really need to be in the room? I guess that's the only thing that I'm questioning of, and then if you are, are you gonna speak? Because again, you haven't been managing this person the whole time, you're just in there and so is it, would it be intimidating to them? Or are you helpful in making them feel like they have a case before they even walk out in the room? I just, they can, they, I offer my employees to sign them, I offer whether they wanna copy or not, I don't make them have a copy, that's their choice. They have a copy of it and from there, then they can, and they go in their file also, they have a personal file, and with what you're saying, I support it. In our evaluations, it should include you, on your time, you have the right to contact the Personnel Committee if you feel that you were, this evaluation was unfair, blah, 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 phone numbers if we have to, whatever, so that they can feel that on their separate time privately can be heard of what was unfairly evaluated.
There's another level of arbitration in a sense, in a sense.
So I agree with what you're saying, but do you need to be in the evaluation?
You just set that up perfectly, so now they come to us, he said, she said.
No, no.
It's written down, but there could've been some.
Well, I'm gonna say, you know what, I'm the best employee you have, I'm here all the time, and then you're gonna go to John and say, hey, did he come in every snow, did he do this?
Right, right.
No, he missed this and he's got written, well, then what are you talking about?
I'm not talking about the evaluation, I'm talking about discussion in between the two people.
In the past.
Either that, you turn that thing, thing on, you do it while you're doing the evaluation.
Well, you could do that, but then you have other issues that you have to. And in the past, an employee had an issue, a city employee had an issue with their direct supervisor, they came to the mayor. I'm telling you, lots of times, they come to the mayor. He's doing this and I don't like it and you're gonna do something about it. So it's usually not the Personnel Committee, they usually go above you, I'm gonna step on your back to get.
Exactly.
So they're gonna go to the mayor, and then it's the mayor's, if the mayor feels it's warranted to go to the Personnel Committee, then it goes to Personnel Committee, but it ultimately goes to the mayor.
I would feel more comfortable with somebody sitting there personally, myself, but if I'm sitting in there.
So again, I just feel like then you don't post our job.
Yeah, I would.
If I came into a meeting.
If I came into a meeting.
You're talking that we have problems in the evaluation.
Personally, you take your.
Well, we've already had two examples of people that are in the same situation with I have evaluation, and evaluation is not volatile.
Not, not.
So you're getting examples of volatile evaluation.
Well, I think there's a perspective on volatile because of the ones I've said and I've felt like they were kind of volatile.
But I believe it was a reprimand, not an evaluation.
No, that, well, one of them was indeed, one of them was a reprimand, yes, but I don't know, I agree with Randy.
Sometimes an evaluation feels like a reprimand.
Yeah.
If you're doing stuff wrong.
Maybe we need to have.
You have those employees, yes, I agree.
The Personnel Committee look at this again, but have Devin sit in with you to give some insight.
I'm almost on board, I just wonder how you're, how we're complicating it by putting the Personnel Committee right in that.
Our aim was not to make it more uncomfortable.
Right, you're supposed to be there for their comfortableness if they feel they're unfair, and they have the right to come to you. And again, in my opinion, again, like Steve's talked about, the employee should be going to my boss, if that don't work, then they should be able to go to the Personnel Committee and hear their case, and then the Personnel Committee, it's not he said, she said, now my, I'm being talked to by you, not the employee, and then, now I'm being evaluated of how I'm doing my job because this person has given us some concerns.
Do you have employees do self evaluations?
Not at this time. We offer them suggestions that they can write anything that they want, but we do not have them.
I forgot, that's something I, I give them a self evaluation, week or two advance, bring it back, and then we have our evaluations of the managers, and we look at them and see what they match, and we question that, and it's never contagious, how do you say that word?
Contagious?
Thank you. But it's just a discussion of what they think they're at and where the managers think they're at. The managers usually have a better opinion, meaning, because they're at a different level than that employee.
Right.
Now, how would you feel about, I like kinda how you said that.
So I support what you're saying, but you get what I'm saying.
When you finish.
Yep.
You have your evaluation, Mindy doesn't like it. The policy, I'm thinking, should, you just said it, she goes to the mayor now.
Exactly.
Over one of us sitting in there, now the mayor comes to us and had a discussion with maybe us three and says, what is, is this the story you've gotta have, the whole thing? If we can agree with her or you, then we have a discussion from there, but that's the whole thing of, I'm saying, we're just a mediator, that's all we're gonna be sitting in there going, do we make a decision?
Have you had a mediator? I have never had a mediator for an evaluation.
You got three of you sitting in that room doing that.
They're bosses, there's different, I've had bosses, no.
No, it's never a mediator.
You are not working with them. You are not working with them.
Right.
That's the difference.
We don't even have HR, we have a full-time HR person, we don't have her in with us when we do this. So, and they can go to her anytime they call her.
So have you ever had anybody in, so the three of you send it out, they go to HR, somebody does agree with it, have you ever had it come back to you at all?
So I'm gonna be brutally honest on one aspect of it, your elected officials coming in, sitting on an evaluation, that we work full-time with these people. My concern is, is I'm very, I'm very proud of the council we have right now, but what council comes in after you and has an agenda sitting in there and makes a mess of something that they don't work with that person at all. So I wasn't gonna say that, but that's my, that's my true concern.
But that's what we need to hear.
But.
We need to hear your honesty.
I do believe that you're putting out a great resource that an employee should be able to use. If you're not, if you don't like the answer you got with the mayor, you got that Personnel Committee, there's their phone number, there's their contact, there's your human resources to say, you need to have some conversation, you need to look at my evaluation, I feel I was treated unfair.
What you wanna do? Gonna throw this back to the Personnel Committee?
Throw it back to Personnel Committee.
That's my goal.
Here you go.
Yeah, we're.
We're punting it.
Here you go. All right, so it's back in your lap, look it over, see what you think, have Devin come and talk to you and bring us something, bring us something. I like the idea of the employee evaluating themselves ahead of time, like same form, they fill it out and then compare.
Basically, I.
Or similar form, maybe that same.
And that's simple.
I can see if I can find what I use, I just got.
It's gotta be the same form you're using.
Form that I got offline, it's pretty simple. And I can try to email you an attachment, but like I said, ours takes probably four hours to do each employee evaluation really. I kid you not, it's a stack of papers like this, they have to list their goals for themselves, you have to list your goals for them and it just gets into.
Then they have to sing the Spartan fight song.
Pretty much. Exactly.
Well, thank you for listening, I do respect the path that you're on, I think it's a good thing, I really do.
Okay, so we're moving this two-star item to our next agenda as well.
Sue?
Yes, John?
Did I tell a lie, how did it start?
Oh, sir.
We went up to McQueen House. When I was a boy, I was raised in the house between the Congregational Church and the McQueen House, and I was probably, I think I was seven, and I had a terrier dog who was my buddy named Lady. In those days, there was the Thatchers, Betty and Ray Thatcher, Ray Thatcher Senior, lived in the house, the McQueen House, and took care of it and lived there and paid a small rent. Well, Mr. Thatcher, on a good day, was very ornery, and he never liked to have anybody in his yard, which was, my yard line was there, and I was told that, you know, you don't cross that line because Mr. Thatcher does not like that. Okay, well, one day, we're playing ball, of course, the ball goes over, it goes almost to the back door of the McQueen House, I go to retrieve it, and Mr. Thatcher comes out and he comes right down the steps and he's got his finger and he's, I think he's gonna just kill me, and my dog grabs him just like this and throws him on the ground. Well, I start running to the house, my dad was home for lunch during the week in summer, and the dog let go and the dog was running with him, my dad comes out the door, goes by me, and I stop and the dog stops and my Thatcher's coming for my dog, and my dad pops him right in the nose, knocks him right on his face. Well, I turn around and I yell, fight! And as my dog and I are preparing to go up the steps at full bar to get the door, my mother opens the door and the dog and I run into my mother and knocked her over, right on her head. I thought I was dead meat, I thought, standing in the corner, my room, no supper, the whole works, and when the dog and I peeked our heads up, my mother and my dad were laughing so hard they couldn't contain themselves, and I dodged a bullet. So I thought, you know, I, Bob Porter, he hit something that, a lot of divisiveness and it's getting worse every day, and not a lot of truth in Washington going on, and that's a hard thing to watch, so.
Thanks for the brevity.
Yeah.
And no thanks for the latter.
Yeah, I know, I know. But anyway, I thought you'd like the story, every once in a while I think of that and I laugh and I laugh and I laugh, and my dog lives 17 years.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, one more thing, I think, if I haven't missed anything else, and that is any other business that may come before council. And our esteemed clerk reported earlier, and I'm gonna let her expound on that, the resolution that I gave you tonight is required by statute for it to go to Attorney General, this is one of the procedures that we have to, we ask council to do, is to have council stay together. So I'm asking that council pass this resolution to go forward with the initiative petition that you received. Just to kind of reiterate what she said earlier, she did receive a petition last week for proposed item on the ballot to change the city charter, and that is in regarding to allow medical marijuana facilities in the city. There were adequate signatures on the petitions, she's been back and forth with the attorney making sure everything has been done properly and correctly, and we now, by requirement, have to put this resolution forward regarding a proposed ballot question. You all have that language in front of you, you're not voting on allowing it, you're not voting to not allow it, you're voting to put it to this language to go on the ballot.
On the ballot, do you have to read all this?
I would prefer that you do so we're transparent because of the initiative petition. Does anybody understand what initiative petition is?
Go ahead and explain.
It is a petition by the people, the people are asking for a ballot proposal, okay? So I just, that's all.
Totally, I mean.
Petitions were.
Yeah, I mean, it's done.
Petitions were brought in with adequate signatures to place this on the ballot.
Have they met all the rules?
I'll tell you what, the attorney's been my best friend because our charter has, the last time it's been amended, it's so.
Wondering why you didn't get it.
And so I've been, you can ask Sue, I've been challenging English on every step we make to make sure that we get all of our eyes, because this is by a group, a Chiwasi Coalition, I believe it's called.
Sure, what's, Something Cares, Michigan Cares, Chiwasi Coalition.
They brought in people to canvass.
Yes.
Because I talked to one of them.
Yep, so they canvassed in to get, so there's a percentage you need according to registered voters of how many signatures, and according to state statute, they have met that, I have, Shirley and I have done it together and double check checked each other through county voter file all through the state, and verified that they are registered voters.
Do you have the teams of people?
I'm sorry?
There's a major typo in it.
Go ahead and do that for me.
Where is that?
Where is it?
Does it not let you, marijuana is spelled wrong.
Oh, yeah, that's the medical way.
That's the medical.
Medical way is spelled with an H.
Medical drops the J.
Really?
Yeah, I asked them.
I was wondering, they can double check it something like that.
Mayor.
But thank you, because I, we want this right.
Yes, no, perfect, I just wanted.
Would it be appropriate to read the resolution first and then get the motion and the second after the fact?
I don't have a.
Let's do that, who would like to read this?
I'll give her a hand.
Bob?
I'll try.
All right.
Just whereas, correct?
Yes.
Whereas the city has received an initiatory petition to amend the city charter allowing for medical marijuana facilities to assist medical marijuana patients with critical needs, medical conditions, and to create a city department of medical marijuana with local regulatory authority. And whereas the city clerk has certified the sufficiency of the registered electors thereto, and the city attorney has reviewed said petition for compliance with the Home Rules City Act and has stated the same meets the requirements. And whereas the city is now tasked with the requirement to adopt by resolution the ballot question to accompany the proposed amendment, therefore it is resolved that the following shall be, A, that be the ballot question to accompany the proposed amendment at the next general election. This proposed charter amendment, if adopted, would assist patients in need of medical marijuana for conditions such as epilepsy, multiple sclerosis, politis, arthritis, Crohn's disease, cerebral palsy, chronic pain, Parkinson's disease, post-traumatic stress disorder and other mental conditions for such, for which marijuana is an approved medical use by the state of Michigan. And the city, and the city's prohibition of medical marijuana facilities and create a city department of medical marijuana responsible for overseeing the local regulatory structure for such facilities.
And then the next line.
Shall be, shall the proposal be adopted, yes or no? I, as the city, as the clerk, no wait, I, as the city clerk, am only making suggestions to.
Yeah, you're just you.
As I read further, oh, I don't have to do that.
So that is the resolution language for the proposed ballot question, that is before us to be a resolution to accept and adopt that.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution as read.
My second.
It's been a motion by Bob, seconded by Larry, to accept and adopt the resolution as read, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Council discussions and observations, do you have any?
So when this goes on the ballot, if it passes, is it only medical marijuana that we would have? Or could it?
That's what it says.
Could it also be recreational?
No, it stipulates medical, for a specific medical reason. It stipulates medical, for specific medical reasons that are approved by the state to treat those medicals, conditions. So no, recreational's not in there.
It's not in the order.
No. So yes, it's just for medical.
So if someone wanted to do an initiative petition to get recreational, they can. Then that would go on the ballot, then that way too, and the order would have to be approved.
But it does say we have to set up the city department for medical marijuana.
If it passes, that's correct.
I'm just dealing with one law, I... I gotta meet this by, and this, the city attorney, after I was able to certify it, I have 10 days to certify it. They had to have this to me by July 27th at 4 o'clock and they met that. And then I have 10 days to certify it. And it has to be the county clerk by August 10th is the deadline. And so the city attorney did this and made sure it was right because he didn't want to have you guys to have to call a special meeting. So that's why it has been done the way it has been done. Otherwise it would, I tried to meet it on a Monday agenda item and we were still, both of us reading statute.
When is our next general election?
November 2nd, but our deadlines are way before because we have to get everything ready so that military and overseas have the opportunity. So there's our big deadlines that we have to meet.
Any other council discussions or observations? Any agenda items for the next agenda? We've identified two that are going to the personnel committee and come back for recommendations.
May I ask then? So I was gonna take off the amendments to the personnel policy because it went to the personnel, because it was directed to that. So it can come back when you're ready. Or do you want no action taken? I guess I'll leave it up to council. Do you want me to take it off until we're done with the personnel policy? Or no action taken?
When is the personnel committee meeting again? When is your regular scheduled meeting?
We don't have a reg, they don't have a regular scheduled.
We have to make one.
I think it should be no action taken until it comes back from the committee.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I would do that.
We could write someone up here.
What's that?
Um, 11th.
So both of them? Because both of them are personnel committee thing. So no action taken on both items. When you're ready, then let Devin know and they'll go on the agenda. Anything else, council, that you want on the agenda next meeting? We're adjourned, 9:32.